...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The call needs ordered. We'll call.
Mayor Westover.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
No public forum. No agenda. Motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Good.
We'll call.
Waltman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Okay, Jason, we have a report.
All right, I was told I gotta make it quick. We did readouts, uh, looked at the light at Chief Blackhawk, got a new one fixed, changed a couple lights out, tightened some hardware, moved some snow, pulled a meter on Fishtree, um, built the transformer, wheeled out like wood, set up temp service, did some pot pulling, located, uh, lines for the siren up at the school, cleaned up some trees behind the shop, fixed the sign on Jackson 9th and had to order a couple signs, changed out the ends of the faucets at Shelter House, cleaned stornery on Blossom Man in front of the grocery store, cleaning and fixing some issues at the water plant. We have our sanitary survey with the DNR on April 9th, sewer jetting at Provost, burnt the brush pile, swept around the park area for the Easter egg hunt, cleaned hose off equipment so there's less salt, less rust. Uh, sirens are now all switched over to the radio read except for the one at the high school because they gotta dig that line in to where it's gotta go, but the rest of them are all working. Took some lights down that were still up at the campground, fixed some chainsaws, some mowers, went around town, picked up sticks, and replaced some screens on some overflows and that's all we're gonna talk about today. Is that quick enough?
That's fantastic.
Did you catch all of that Dale?
I sure did.
There was a plug by Fred Huffman. Did you guys finally figure it out? There was a drain plugged?
I don't know who Fred Huffman is. Where does he live?
Blossom.
Yes. Yes, we got it cleaned.
He's complained for years about that. You guys finally found the plug. Thank you. He may not call as often as he used to.
I'm not counting on anything, sir.
Did you mention that we got the mulch, we put the mulch down at the park?
Nope. Put the mulch down at the park also?
Yes.
I just hope to keep it short.
I understand that. I was just, I didn't know if I missed it.
Any questions? Chief, anything you can share?
Yeah, we've had 265 calls for service over the past month. We got the white charger back and the black one went back down to get the cage and graphics on it. That's about it.
Does the white one get in the graphics?
No. It's gonna be unmarked.
Why do we need an unmarked?
Because we wanna unmark.
Who made that decision?
I did.
I don't feel that in town decides we need an unmarked vehicle.
Well, we got one, so.
I think that should be up for discussion.
I don't think it should. The office said anything, so.
I mean, I think if you need an unmarked, you need much needed. We don't know.
That works the same as a marked one.
Whatever. The kids will figure it out pretty quick anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, Teresa?
Um, I worked on the ME one report, which is a state annual report for the electrical facility, and so that was due today. And, um, Kay helped me, we got, got all the numbers gathered last week and, um, through a couple of, uh, errors and, and I got it all submitted today. So, um, that's done. And, uh, the budget is pretty much, other than maybe some final tweaking, I think I pretty much have it wrapped up, um, for you guys to take a look at if there's any, um, changes that you see that need to be made. We can certainly do that. Um, I have to have it submitted to the paper on Thursday. Um, so if we got anything that we think that we need to switch around, um, I did make a few changes and we can talk about that a little bit later. Um, other than that, the budget, um, should be fairly wrapped up. And, um, I did get an email today just so that you all know, um, and we'll have to have a discussion on what we wanna do with it. Um, I got, uh, 203 Broughton, Travis Smith emailed me today so that he was no longer interested in the property. And I was just finishing up the paperwork and gonna call him to have him come sign the papers and pay his fee, but, um, he emailed me that he didn't give me any reason. Alls he said he was no longer interested. So, just so that you guys are aware of that, um, we'll probably have to discuss and see if we want to contact the second bidder that we had, or if you want to start the process all over and go back out for bid on it.
Just delays it again quite a bit, doesn't it?
Absolutely.
It wasn't until the second bids were close.
Okay.
Only two bidders.
Okay, I will, I will do that and see where we go from there. Um, and that's about it.
Okay, may we move on to a discussion consideration of quiet hours at the campground?
Um, there has been a discussion, um, kinda going over before we get the rules published for this season would be if there, um, was a desire or if you guys wanted to change the quiet hours at the campground, um, for the purpose of, uh, I think quiet hours now end at 11:00. Um, you know, the state side, they end at 10:30, um, just to kinda quiet resident, you know, for residential purposes in the area. Certainly up to you guys. I just wanted to, it was asked for me to put it up for discussion and see if you guys wanted to change them for this year.
Uh, I, I think it's a great idea to change it to 10 o'clock. 11 o'clock is too late, especially when they've been having bands in there and I don't know who's given them permission to have the band. Uh, last year that band played till 11:50.
Um, I, this year, I mean, and one thing I didn't, with the camp, with the potential campground manager and when, when we were interviewing last week, um, it was the discussion that there would be no bands or that if there were bands, then, then they had to seek council approval before it was done. It was something that had to be scheduled and not just, hey, we wanna have a band on Saturday night. Is that okay? Um, so I, I made it that, that if there's going to be a band at the campground, we, we have, we require council approval for just about any event, that they would have to, um, make sure that it's something that's scheduled and that they would have to request permission from the council for that.
Perfect.
Do they have that over in the stateside? Do they have anything?
They can't have bands there. Um, over across the street, they have bands that last.
And members.
Whoever.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not our.
County thing.
That's, yeah.
You know, and when you define quiet hours, what are you saying? Nobody could be outside camper at, around the fireplace, you know?
No, I'm not, no, it just, I, I think.
I just wanna clear that up.
Right. I think, you know, like on the state side, usually it's quiet hours start at like 10:30. That means that you aren't, you know, playing a lot of music. You aren't, you know, if you're sitting by your campfire and you're enjoying your evening, that's one thing, you know, just, you know, if you had visitors kind of like maybe, you know, unless they, you know, kind of gone on their way, it just, you know, starts to be kind of a quiet time.
Yeah. And, and that, that is basically, I would say, a judgmental thing of the campground host, you know, whether they're being too loud or not. And for them to police that at that, at that time.
Right, yeah. It's not saying y'all gotta go inside and, you know, be done for the night. It's, it's, you know, time to maybe, you know.
You're using that 12 o'clock or 10 o'clock, whatever time it is, you're using that as a tool to get people to calm down and start to disperse a little bit if needed.
Well, right, yeah. You, you know, I was like, there was times I sat around my campfire until about midnight or so until, you know, but it wasn't that we were playing a lot of music. You're just enjoying the, you know, the, the fire, that kinda thing.
Well, at least just stay consistent and not have, well, have bands since you can't on the state side. It's there for camping and therefore.
And I have no problem with that at all. That's why.
I'm just wondering. I'm just asking that.
That's why I know that if they've had bands in the past, the approval needs to go through council to do that, not necessarily, you know, just that we're gonna schedule a band on Friday night and hey, this was a lot of fun and, you know, we're gonna make it kind of a crazy thing. So that's why I was saying that this year it had to go through, if they were going to do that, that they had to seek approval of the council and you guys can certainly, you know, deny that if you want.
I agree with you. Why do I don't even know why we have to seek the permission from the council to make it, uh, uh, rule. There is no band in the campground.
Well, and I'm fine with that too.
Reason, I'm just saying that, so, so Chris comes, he wants to have a band and we let him do it.
Yep, it's not standard.
You, Jim comes, well, Jim's got a little bit of a more rowdy bunch.
I think we have enough activity through the summer with our summer concert series that, that, that would be something that isn't necessarily needed down there on any given weekend, I suppose.
Well, you could have it every weekend then too.
Right.
That's, that's the whole.
And, and I agree, I can, I would agree with that also. I mean.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I mean, that's, you guys, you guys lay out and tell us what, what you want for rules, so.
We don't want a Woodstock dump. I mean, I don't, that's.
I'm good with no live bands.
Maybe it should be worded somehow so that there's a, you know, I know, I'm a guitar player. We sit around my campfire at the campground quite a bit and somebody's got a guitar out, but that's not what I can.
But, yeah, that's different. That's just.
And, and, yeah, that's totally different, Jim. And you're, you're not hooked up to an amplifier and a loudspeaker.
Yeah, these are no, no OPA systems.
Have you heard him play guitar? Thank God.
It's a good thing. That's why I start leaving that.
Sound a lot better with a 12 pack.
That's right, that's how I'm doing it.
Um, so as far as the quiet hours, what do you think Dale? We just went to 10:30.
I agree, I agree with what you were saying before. They're sitting around their picnic table and six, eight, 10 of them sitting there and they're just BSing back and forth having a beer watching the campfire. That's, that's totally fine. It's, it's when they're playing this loud music.
Right, right.
Not just when they have a band and they're, they're playing loud music where you can hear it 10 campers away. That's, that's a little bit different. Then, then they gotta call the cops, um, you know, we just need that stopped. This is not a place that sits party till 2:00 in the morning all the time.
You, you said the state side has a 10:30 quiet time. I, I would make the motion to stay consistent with them, 10:30, start in the quiet time and, and no type of amplified music in the campground.
I'll second that.
We'll call.
You give that to Dale.
Yeah, I did. Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna talk about the rates for 2025.
Did we get the stuff that you guys copied on Friday?
Why don't we put it in a packet?
There, yeah.
Those were just from the area.
Oh, here, okay, in the spreadsheet. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, rates from area campgrounds that we could find online.
So, as you can see, um, the various rates, um, on the, on the way right of that Camp Crescent rate, so if you take, we tried to break it out in between different options of what you could get, um.
Not all of the other campgrounds have same options we do, but.
So like if you talk, in our, in our county, go ahead Dale, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just looking at under Blackhawk where it says 75 to 33. Uh, Dave, you, you camp over there, is that like the 33 is like their lakefront or?
Thirty, 33, they have one, um, full service hookup that includes sewer and that would include that one. Otherwise, um, the electricity ones with 50 amp went to $25 a night for this year. That just includes electricity, no water. Um, in comparing with Lakeview, they all have water, they all have electricity, and not all of them have sewer. So, you know, and looking at that, um, comparing the two and comparing others and, um, our financial need for the campground, you know, of course we need to look at a rate increase just like everybody else is. Um, I was gonna propose for the full hookups going to $33 and the, um.
You talking 50 amp full hookup?
Yep, for 50 amp full hookup. And then, uh, for the electricity and water to the $28, that'd be a $4 increase. I guess that's where I thought about starting the discussion, you know, see what everybody else thought. And that puts us more in line with everybody else also. Um, but again, you know, we have to also look at our needs. Um, wages in the campground and stuff have gone up.
I agree 100% that we should go up. At least, I mean, if you look at the five other ones that are here, look at the amenities and, and the activities that we provide for being in that campground.
Exactly. And I forgot about our internet service.
You got internet also. I mean, if you think of, you know, our carnival, Sippin' Sample, the concerts, there's stuff going on all the time in there that make that a much more desirable place to camp than some of the other places. I think we at least need to be in the, in the, in the mid-range with them. If not, on the high end, just because of what, what services besides that we have.
But I also feel we need to go straight across the board for every site, not just the full.
It's hard, it's hard to do that by, when, when some sites have a full hookup.
Right.
You shouldn't expect, as a camper, you expect to pay more for a full hookup than you do if you don't have sewer.
Or even for one that doesn't have, just doesn't have the sewer.
I mean, we have top notch amenities at our campground.
But aren't, aren't you charging so much for the site and then so much if you want the full hookups?
No, 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 site price.
Right. This row is this much, this row is this much.
The other thing you have to remember, and I don't know about these other towns, um, K and Tracy, you guys might know this on your research, but at Camp Crescent, if you stay six nights, you get the seventh night free.
Right. So.
I don't know if other places do that.
I'm not, I don't know that anyplace else.
You just definitely don't know that state side either, so.
And so, when you start to look at that and compare that, you know, if you're there seven, seven nights, then it makes our rates even.
Even more desirable.
Not even in the mid-range, you know what I mean?
So I'll make a motion, we go up to 33 for the full hookups.
So go, go down the list, Dave. What are you thinking? So, sorry, 28, go to 33?
So 28 right now is lakeside.
Okay.
And that's not full hookup.
Oh, they're not?
Lakeside, lakeside is not full hookup.
There's no sewer on the lakeside.
Water only, right?
Electric and water. Yep, yep.
Okay.
But you're getting a lake.
You get the lake.
But you're getting a lake.
Yep.
So.
So you're thinking that, what do you wanna do with that one, Dave? What do you think on that?
Are, are, I thought some of them were full hookups on the, love the lake.
I don't think so.
Some of them have, I think they all have 50 amp service, but none of them have electric, uh, sewer.
Sewer. 50 amp electric plus water.
Can, can we make it easy and just go up like, uh, 12% across the board?
What's 12%?
Well, or round it.
Well, yeah, can we make it a nice round number for?
Well, we will, yeah.
Yeah.
12% round up?
And we do that for the, yeah.
12% only gonna be $3.
That's 31. So, I mean, I was even if you went, so 28 to 9, 30, 31, that's three bucks. If you went to 31, 24 plus 3 is 27, 22 plus 3 is 25.
25.
22 is 25, 20 is 23, 18, 19, and 21. So if you started at the top and you go down, you got 31, 27, 25, 25, 23, and 21.
That's.
That's still cheap.
That's still pretty reasonable.
That's still pretty cheap.
And then if we can reevaluate again if we have to next year.
I'm not fun with that. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Then we also, what, what we can also do is see how many, who would that say for the seven, seven, for the week?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we, I mean.
Then you could take a look once that's not that many, then.
Yep.
You eliminate it. I mean, it's all, all dead spot.
There's, there's not very many, there's not very many campgrounds that let you like multiple, um, pull in. I mean, usually you have a two week stay, no matter where you go. If you, you gotta either then move or do something to, I mean, we've got construction workers that come in here and they stay all summer, you know, and those, there's not very many campgrounds that allow you just to not move. And we, right now, don't require that, except for, uh, we don't require that for any of them, do we?
There's, there's just two sites on lakefront that you can only stay for two weeks.
Right.
So that they open up for other people.
Yep. So, but other than that, if you wanna come in and pay and let, if it's a rereservable site or even not a reservable site, can you? We don't require people if it's a non-reservable site for, for service.
Yeah, but non-reservables only have electric and those don't usually stay.
And we talked about that a few years back, a couple years back. And if you got two people that are in a spot, side by side, all they're just gonna do is go up and change the name, but they wanna stay there for a month, so, um.
Right.
It makes it, there's ways around it. I don't know, we have to get to the two week thing. I'm in favor of raising the rate and we can evaluate again next year. Um, and that way we take a smaller profit, if that makes sense.
Yep. I'll make a motion that we go with those rates.
Three, basically three bucks, $3 increase across the board.
Yes.
Okay.
Jim, second. We'll call.
Waltman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna hold it here. Don't you?
Um, I think, um, Dale, Tammy sent you an email that would include what I've provided to council this evening, if you happen to have that.
It's on the next page you're on.
Okay. Um.
I have the transfer one in an attachment and then I have, they have a little attached to my page or something.
Yep. So, um, basically the front page, this is what, in a sense, the, the budget's gonna look like. Um, the levy is down at the bottom is $8.68. That includes, the, the general fund and that includes the, the $50,000 that we put in the budget for the liability property and self-insurance costs, so levying for that now. And then for the employee benefits, and those are basically the employee benefits that are out of the general fund. The proprietary fund is gonna, you know, pays for itself, but these would be, you know, the police department insurance and, um, the parks department insurance and, you know, some, I think we've got a little bit of the admin of, of how. And how I divided it out is basically percentage of time that we're going to do in salaries. So, you know, if your time is majority in parks and then part of it's gonna be public works, part of that is in parks and part of it's in public works. If it was, um, like Tammy, um, and Kay, majority of their work is out of, you know, I broke their salaries out of water, sewer, electric because a lot of what they do is with the utility billing, especially Tammy. Um, and then my salary's got some admin into it and then Jason's does too, but he's is also divided out between water, sewer, electric, the whole nine yards. So, um, this 120,000 is basically the health, the insurance cost that would be for the gen, you know, the general fund. Um, then, you know, but you gotta owe the detail of the budget. I don't really know that. You guys can cruise it at your own whim. Um, but then if you go to the back page, basically the last page, which is page 20 Dale.
Okay.
The bottom there, I mean, it kinda tells you what annual fiscal year 23 was on your fund balance. So at the bottom two numbers is you have your beginning fund balance and then you'll have your ending fund balance. So what we had in actual fiscal year 23, and we then reestimated for fiscal 24, and then what is anticipated for fiscal year 25, and we actually would be increasing the bottom fund balance just a little bit. Um, but just, and it depends on how it's all gonna shake out. And this could change once we get to the end of this fiscal year and how the end of this year shakes out. So, I mean, again, these are estimated numbers, but these, you know, what we anticipate to do. Um, I did.
I have a question. So in line one, on that, on page 20, on line one, taxes levies on a property.
Yep.
So we're actually in fiscal year 2023, we're at 712,000, correct?
Yes.
And then our budget expectation with this new, uh, asset value and our levy rate, we're gonna be at 976?
Yes.
So we're gonna, in a sense, we're gonna collect 269,000?
64.
Or 67,000, whatever that number difference is, 976, 712, um.
260.
It's 260 or?
Yeah, about 264,000.
264,000 dollars. So our, we're raising, in, in cents, we're raising approximately 264,000 dollars more on property tax.
Yeah, your, your revenues that you will be bringing in will be 264,000 additional than what we had in fiscal year 23.
But that, that includes, uh, new construction, that type of thing also, right?
Yes. That's based off of your valuation.
Yeah, so, and I'm not really trying to fixate the part here, but I guess I am. If we took out the Evapco addition and we took out, uh, the, the Jacobson addition, there were two big large additions for property tax, that's gonna be a set in the right, 'cause that's, this would be the year that they're being taxed, right? Because tax is always a year behind.
Oh, yeah, you're, yeah, you're talking about the valuation that would have increased on the commercial property for the Evapco addition.
Yeah.
Yes.
For, for, for point of conversation, can we, and I don't, this is terrible to do, but we can just say that the new construction or added buildings might make up $65,000 of that 265, or 64, then 264. So the rest of the residents taxes are going up 200,000 dollars. And we don't have that number of the new construction stuff that's been added yet. See what I'm getting at?
Right.
I think we're, I think we are going up too much on our, on our city residence property taxes. That, that's my point of trying to make.
You're trying to say the levy is too high.
Because our asset values went up so much. I think that was Denny, Denny Berry was being at the other night compared to the county and the school. They didn't go up that much. They changed their levy rate, obviously, because they're not taking that much more in.
Well, I mean, and I didn't bring that, I didn't bring that. Let me go up and get that piece of paper I had in my office.
Remember, once this tax, this stuff goes up, it's never gonna come down.
Well, it hasn't passed.
Yeah.
We lowered it in the past. That's why it kept down to seven, whatever it was.
The levy rate has come down.
So.
But your taxes aren't the dollar figure, what we pay at the end of the, isn't ever gonna come down.
So the school, on their proposed property tax that they sent out in the county, their current, their current property tax revenues is $5,659,950. Their proposed revenues that they're going to bring in with the levy rate that they've proposed is $6,94,783. They're going from a current tax rate of $11.76 to $11.71. Countywide, now this, this is a little different between, so countywide, they anticipate revenues of $5,501. now, this, this is a little different between, so countywide, they anticipate revenues of five million, five hundred and one dollars and nine, five million, five hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. And that's, rule additional is two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. That was what their current is. Their proposed is five million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-four, so that's going up a little over two hundred thousand. And their rule additional is going to two million, five hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, which is a little over, not quite a hundred thousand. Their current tax rates on countywide is five point eight three six and three point five two five, and their proposed tax rates were five point six seven and three point four five. So their actual revenues are increasing, their levy rate is going down. And that pretty much is based on their growth, because that's what the state is stip, is, is stipulating. If we had not, if we had not levied outside of the, the general, the general levy of only bringing in that little over seven hundred thousand dollars of, yeah, so, um, yeah, between seven hundred and twelve and if, uh, if we had taken out the, the fifty thousand and the hundred and twenty thousand, that's where, that's, your actual levy rate would have gone down twenty cents. It's the levy rates that are going in there because of the additional levies that we put in for the liability and for the employee benefits.
Right, but, but you know, but my point is, and I follow what you're saying.
Right.
My point is, my point is, we're going up, the city of Lakeview is going up two hundred and fifty-four thousand, compared to the county going up two hundred and twenty-two thousand. We're actually gonna take more tax dollars in, we're gonna increase our tax dollars more than the county and the countywide. And it's our, the city of Lakeview's value weights have skyrocketed since twenty twenty. And I don't have my notes for first, I looked up some houses today, and it's, it's, it's absolute absurd how much our investments are going up, which in turn raises the property taxes on the homeowners that we now have to, that it naturally comes into us. That's why the state changed that law, because all across, the whole country, they're talking about that, because the evaluation has skyrocketed the last four years. I'm wondering if we, I just think we're charging too much with levy, so I don't think, I think we're gonna get a big backlash from any residents once they realize how much this is going up. It's not a small number. I just wanna make that point clear, I just, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it.
But our city expenses have gone through the roof too, we have no control over that.
Well, they, they have gone up as well, John, there's some stuff that we, we might have to tighten up, I agree that, but they haven't went up that much. I mean, I agree, we have, and, and, and our personnel expenses have went up, but we want that to cater to the right type of employees, you know, we've got good employees, we wanna keep good employees, but some of this stuff is just, that's, that's an enormous amount of increase. And if I'm doing one of the things that way, fine, I just, I'm saying it might be. And I'm sorry I'm not there, I couldn't be there, but I, I just, I'm speaking like, that's a huge increase. When you start looking at the value weights of your house, and how much they went up, and how much more taxes do we gotta pay?
What else we got?
I, I don't have anything else unless, I mean, Jason and I, we kind of, we went through the budget again, I, unfortunate, it's an estimate, so we certainly, you know, if we can save, you know, and then maybe not have to put that much into it, I, I don't know, it, like I said, except for the hundred and twenty thousand and the fifty thousand, um, you know, your levy actually would have gone down twenty cents, even though it would have still been increasing your revenues based, yes, and based off of your, the assessed value. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot with the assessed values that we can do to change that, because then that goes against market value and different things, so that's where, you know, being a former assessor, I, I, I can, I can argue that kind of all day long too, but, um, at the end of the day, it, it's one of those, expenses have gone up, and I don't know where else I can cut two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars out of our general fund, um, to make any of, of that go back in line, cause that's, that's a big chunk of change to have to cut out as well.
It, it is a big chunk of change to have to cut out, I agree with you, but it's also a big chunk of change that we're taking is from our residents in town. That's my point.
But in the end, we have to build a pair of bills, unfortunate as it is.
Well, we might, we might have to take some serious looks and some serious cuts, um, I, I just think, I'm worried about the backlash, that's all I'm saying, I brought it to everybody's attention, you guys can wall over in a while, but you think about what that increase is, that's huge. That's a huge increase.
Anybody have anything else?
It's, uh, it's twenty, twenty, twenty-seven percent.
And you, well, the one thing I will say, you have to remember, not everybody's taxes are gonna go up in that percentage. It's going to go, you know, if their assessed value went up, you know, a couple thousand, it certainly isn't going to impact on their property taxes.
They're in the, they built a house in our town that their assessed value went up a couple thousand.
Well.
You start looking at it, they went up, they went up almost doubled in the last four years.
Right, and the, and the unfortunate thing about assessments is that the inflation, the, well, the inflation rate against the market values, um, now things have subsided back down and it's going to take a while for assessments to reach, to, to, to say, hey, you know, the assessed values were, were, in a sense, overstated, um, so at the end, that always, it always takes a while for stuff, and if they hadn't been increased for a really long time and, you know, goes back against the market value and i- if the market values are holding those, then that goes with, along with the property tax rates in the state of Iowa, unfortunately.
It does, I, I, I know.
Right. And, and we aren't the only community that's feeling that as well, I mean, there's, across the entire state, assessment values have gone up, it's like, I'm glad I don't own a home in Ankeny.
Two kids, I hear you. Any more questions on the budget? Most of you adjourn.
Solo.
Second?
I'll second.
Any adjourn?
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, guys.
Go Iowa.
Yeah, don't get it.
You heard me say that.
I did, I did.